One and welcome to this week's study session. Thanks for everyone who dropped something in the chat around. What we want to cover tonight. I see contracts in there, which I know we had to stop a little early on contracts last week, so I'll start there. And then we'll hit. Transfer a title and general principles of agency. I do apologize. We're gonna have to wrap up around six forty-five tonight. I have another appointment. Running with the stack schedule, so I apologize. I also wanted to let you know that. Well, I'm not sure about next week yet, but the on the twenty-sixth or sorry twenty-seven, there won't be a study session until the twenty-seventh of December that that week. We will be out. So and then just keep a lookout on emailing in the Facebook group for whether or not we'll have one next week. I'm looking for coverage there. Know how important it is for you guys. Want to support you in your prep for the exam. As a reminder with that, there's always recordings of these, right? We do the same thing every week with hey, what sections do you want to cover? What do you want that to look like? How do we do that? And then we, you know, go through and hit those questions. So if you don't have copy cram yourself or you're not yet sick of the sound of my voice. It's a great opportunity for you to just, you know, throw a headphone and treat it like a podcast, listen to us talk about definitions and things like that. Starting with contracts. Question number one. A listing agent shows a buyer a home. The buyer then fills out an offer to buy the home and listing agent takes it and explains it to the sellers. The sellers like the offer and sign their acceptance of it. They then hand the offer back to their agent with the instructions to deliver the accepted contract back to the buyer. At this point, all of the following statements are true, except for which one? Is it A? The offer was accepted by the sellers. B. The sellers have not relinquished their control of acceptance. C, the listing agent has possession of the accepted offer. Or D. The accepted offer doesn't need to be communicated to the or delivered to the buyer. Which one of these is not true? Put A, B, C, or D in the chat. Yeah, D is going to be the correct answer. It does need to be communicated, right? And so that's a really important thing. When your seller accepts an offer or your buyer accepts a counter. You need to deliver that information according to their instructions, which ninety-nine percent of the time is going to be immediately. Otherwise, it is not a live deal. The offer has to be accepted and communicated. Question number two. Which are liquidated damages? A, paper money that has been soaked for twenty-four hours. B, an amount. The parties agree on to settle a potential dispute. C, losses suffered when liquidating a business, or D, a cashier's check used to empty a broker account. Lots of Bs in the chat, and that's going to be correct. Liquidated damages are the amount of money that all the parties agree upon before entering into a contract that would serve as compensation in the event of a breach. Question number three. If the buyer in contract for deed, a land contract, has paid less than twenty percent of the purchase price and defaults. The seller may A, file a judgment lien, B, start forfeiture proceedings. C, start foreclosure proceedings, or D. Wait ten days. And then sell to someone else. Which one of these is going to be the result of somebody defaulting with less than twenty percent paid on a land contract? All right, lots of Bs in the chat. That's going to be correct. Now, the important consideration here is. Forfeiture versus foreclosure. Because it's a land contract and there's less than twenty percent paid. That's going to lead to forfeiture. There's no foreclosure process. They're just forfeiting their right to that property if the proceedings are, if the seller follows through with the proceedings. Foreclosure is when you have a purchase money mortgage or somebody has more than twenty percent down in the property. Then you would have to foreclose on that completely different process, completely different outcomes. Question number four. Which has occurred when a contract has been rescinded and each party returns to the other any consideration that has been tendered? Is it A, restoration, B, reconciliation, C, restitution, or D, replacement? All right, looks like we have some Cs in the chat. That's correct. Restitution is the rescission of the contract. Restoration and replacement are two building terms, right? Restoration is restoring something to a comparable. Level. Replacement is replacing it precisely. And reconciliation is part of the appraisal process where they merge together all the different strategies to get to a final price. Question number five. The law requiring certain real estate contracts to be in writing to be enforceable is called. A, the statute of frauds, B, the written instrument law, C, the parole evidence law, or D. The statute of limitations. A is correct. That is the statute of frauds. Question number six. If upon receipt of a purchase under certain terms. The seller makes a counter offer, the prospective purchaser is A, bound to accept the counter offer. B, bound by the agent's decision. C, bound by the original offer, or D, relieved of the original offer. Lots of Ds in the chat, and that one's going to be correct. Whenever you make a counter offer, always important to educate your clients on this. Whenever they make a counter offer. They are rejecting and putting to bed. Laying to rest that original offer and putting forth a whole new offer. So you can't put out a counter offer and then say, oh, they didn't like our counter offer. We'll take their first offer. Doesn't work that way. The first offer is dead and gone. Whoops. What? Excuse me. Question number seven. The term specific performance refers to. Excuse me. A, the legal procedure action brought by either the buyer or seller to enforce the terms of the contract. B. The agreement of all parties of the contract. C, an executed contract in which all elements of the contract have been successfully fulfilled. Or D, the right of either party to cancel a contract provided legal notice is given. Everyone says A, and everyone is correct. That is the legal remedy. For getting someone to do what they said they were going to do. Question eight. A buyer makes an offer subject to reviewing the results of a home inspection. After the inspection, the buyer is ready to move forward with the deal. Which does the buyer's agent need to do at this point? A, recommend that the buyer get an appraiser for the property. B, require that the sellers recommend make the recommended repairs on the inspection report. C, advise the buyer to renegotiate the purchase price, or D, prepare a. An anendum, removing that contingency. And D is correct. They want to move forward. You remove that contingency that it's subject to a home inspection. You've had the home inspection. No repairs required. Remove the contingency and move to close. Question number nine. Once both parties have signed a purchase and sale agreement and the buyer's earnest money check is deposited in the broker's special trust account, whose money is it? A, the buyer's until closing? B, the seller's until closing? D, or C, the brokers as a prepayment of commission, or D, nobody's until the transaction is completed, completed, rescinded, or breached? Yes. Before you're under contract, the money is the buyer's money. After you're out, after the contract is completed and closed, it's the seller's money. In between, while you are under contract, it is nobody's money. You must make sure your client understands that. Question number ten. A purchase and sale agreement stipulates the earnest money deposit be placed in a separate interest-bearing account. And with any interest earned, split between the buyer and the seller. This is A, money laundering, B, okay, because both parties have agreed to it. C, not okay, because and the broker should resign the listing, or D, against the law. Yeah, B is correct. Pretty much anything can be done with earnest money, except it can't be made out to an agent in the transaction. As long as it's in the contract and the buyer and seller agree to it, you can do basically anything you want with it. Question number eleven. A condition or contingency in a contract can be waived by the A, lender's appraiser. B. Broker for the buyer. C. Broker for the seller, or D. The party benefiting from that contingency. D is correct. It is the party that benefits. Benefits from the contingency. Question number twelve. A seller and buyer agree on terms of a purchase and sale agreement and are now waiting for closing to occur. Unfortunately, before closing incur, improvements on the property are struck by lightning and destroyed. The buyer may, in this situation, terminate the contract. B, accept the property and claim the insurance proceeds. C, do any of these answers listed? Or D, accept the property as is. Yes, all of these are options in this situation. Question number thirteen. The scope and purpose of a real estate contract does not include the sale of A, real property. B, a home, C, fixtures, or D, personal property. D is correct. That is executed on a bill of sale and anything that you want included, like a big mirror or lamp should be included as a fixture or have a separate bill of sale. Question number fourteen. If the landlord and the real estate manager of a national retailer both execute a lease and the corporation failed to occupy the premise, why might that be? A, the economy declined and the retailer was closing stores. B, the broker did not have a written listing. C, the real estate manager didn't have authority to make the deal, or D, the corporate resolution granting signing authority of the real estate manager was approved. Yeah, D is correct. No corporate. Resolution. So when you're dealing with corporations, deal with commercial, you'll run into this, but need to ensure that the people you're dealing with have the right to do it. Question number fifteen. What is the best explanation of an option? Is it A, a clause that grants either. Party the right to cancel the contract provided legal notices given. B. The legal procedure or action brought by either the seller or buyer or seller to enforce specific terms of the contract. C, an agreement with consideration granting exclusive rights to buy or lease a property at a given price within a stated period of time. Or D, a document involved in closing real estate transactions. Yeah, we saw a couple As in there. It's actually going to be C. This is why it's important to read all of the answers, right? You know, A feels pretty good, but you know, one part of it is. It says that either party has the right. Options are unilateral contracts, meaning only one party has the right. And that's defined in the third option there. All right. Excellent work, guys. Got them all. Let's go to transfer of title. Excuse me. All right. What do we have here? An affidavit of title is A, a disclosure. Of the property known, properties known physical defects. B, a sworn statement title is good. C, a disclosure of the relationship in which one party. Acts for represents another. Or D, the pledge of real property as security for repayment of debt. Yeah, B is correct. A sworn statement that the title is good. Question number two. How is real estate distributed when a person dies testate? A, the executor distributes the estate according to the will? B. The law of intestate succession is at play? C, the widow gets everything, or D, the law of descendant and distribution is in play? A is correct. The executor distributes it according to the will because there is a will because you know that because he dies testate. Intestate would then lead to it being, you know, any of these other things could happen. Or some of these other things could happen. It would go through probate court, different things will come into play, not concerning you candidly. Until later on. Question number three. The promise in a deed that the seller is the owner of the property and the buyer has the right to possess and is known as the what covenant of. Saison? B, the covenant against liens and encoverances? C, the covenant of warranty forever? Or D, the covenant of quiet enjoyment? Yes. A is correct. That is what it is. That is what the definition is. So, you know, and if you, if you feel like you're going through these questions a lot from a. From the standpoint of. Studying, hit the definitions as well, because those are going to be really powerful and helping you get through questions on the exam. Standard title insurance covers A, unrecorded title defects, B, all title defects, C, recorded title defects, or D, defects disclosed by a competent survey. C is correct. Standard title insurance covers those defects that could be found by a search of public records. Question number five. When a buyer asks the seller to provide title insurance and they agree, who picks the title insurance? A, either the seller or buyer. B, the seller, C, the lender slash bank, or D, the buyer slash buyer's agent. B is correct. The owner's title insurance policy would be chosen by the party paying for the policy. When the seller is paying for the buyer's closing costs. The seller agrees to provide insurance for the buyer and they get to decide who provides it. All right. And I think the next one we're going to go into is general principles of agency. Another one of the big sections on the national exam. Question number one. Seller Sally listed with broker Larry and he sells her home. To buyer Bill for two hundred thousand. Bill is represented by his own buyer's agent. An earnest money check for two thousand dollars is attached to the contract. After both parties have fully executed the contract, Larry deposits the check into escrow. Per the contract instructions. Two days later, Larry receives notice the check has been returned for insufficient funds. What should Larry do first? Is it A, contact Bill's agent immediately and get a new check? B, cover the check out of his own funds and then contact Bill to repay him. C, contact Sally Sally immediately notifying her of the bad check. Or D, contact Bill immediately to get the check covered. Yeah, guys, these are surprisingly simple. They are exactly what you think, like communication's key. Just call your seller and be like, hey, listen, went to deposit there in this money check, insufficient funds. I'm going to follow up with the agent on the other side. I'm sure it's a mistake, nothing to worry about, and I wanted to make sure you're aware. I'll let you know when it's time to worry. Great. Question number two. A listing broker tells the buyer client that the seller is anxious to sell because they are delinquent in their mortgage payments. And do not want the property to go into foreclosure. Such a disclosure is A, unacceptable because of the fiduciary duty owed to the seller. B, required because the broker is the only agent. Or excuse me, is the is also the agent of the buyer. C, acceptable if it results in an offer and a quick sale, or D, only permitted if the mortgage lender authorized the disclosure. Yeah, the answer here is A, you cannot walk around telling people that unless. Your client gives you consent to reveal those facts, not the mortgage lender, not anybody else, but your client says, hey, listen. Get me an offer. Tell him I'm going into foreclosure and I need to sell it now. Question number three. For a broker to act for more than one party in a real estate transaction without the knowledge and consent of all parties. Would be considered A, grounds for disciplinary action, B, contrary to the board of Realtor bylaws. C, acceptable as long as no party suffers actual monetary damages, or D, ethical. A is correct. You cannot do that. You can represent multiple parties in the same transaction. It's just everybody has to sign off on it, has to be disclosed. Question number four. If the fiduciary duty of loyalty requires that the agent A, arrange financing for the buyer, B, obey. Each and every request, C, look out for their own interests, or D, hold the principal's interest above all other interests. D is correct. Your fiduciary duty is that you hold your client's interest above all others. Question number five. An agency relationship should be created by which method? A, ratification, B, estoppel, C, implication, or D, express written agreement? He is correct. Express written agreement. That's the key, right? You need those agency agreements in writing to ensure that they are enforceable. Question number six. A seller instructs a sales agent not to disclose a defect hidden behind a panel wall. The sales agent is under the duty to A, not follow this instruction of the principal at this time and to possibly void the listing. B, turn the seller into the appropriate real estate authorities. C, follow all commands of the principal, or D, file a complaint with HUD. A is correct. Not follow those instructions. Don't do anything that's illegal or unscrupulous. And if they are forcing the issue, forfeit the listing. It is not worth it. Question number seven. An agency relationship created through a listing contract can be terminated by A, the agent's discarding of the agency disclosure forms. B, the seller or broker's death. C, agent executing a buyer agency contract, or D, the buyer principal renouncing the agency relationship. Yes, in this situation, a listing contract is terminated automatically when the broker or the seller die. Question number eight. A real estate agent is referred to as what type of agent? A, universal, B, limited, C, general, or D, special? Get your license and you will be special. You will be a special agent. General agent can do anything under one. Branch, like general real estate practice around property management. Universal agent can do anything that, anything on behalf of the principal. No such thing as a limited agent. Question number nine. A listing agent works for the seller, a buyer's agent works for the buyer. Which responsibility does a licensee have? To the other agent's party? A, keep the other party's confidential information from his own principal? B. No responsibilities owed to another party as the agent's duties are only owed to the principal? C, owes the first duty of allegiance to the other party, or D. Must treat all parties in the transaction honestly and fairly. Yes, D is correct. You have. The responsibility and the duty to treat everybody honestly and fairly. Question number ten. The fiduciary duties of a cold include A, all of these answers, B, obedience, C, accountability, or D, loyalty? A is correct. It is all of the above. In during the exam. You might have five different questions that are all of the above or none of the above. My recommendation is. If they offer you that, it's likely that. Four out of five are going to be the all or none of the above. So take advantage of it, lean into it, and you know, that'll help you from a completion standpoint. Does everybody know what the A C O L D, the cold are? What are, what are those? Put the, what's the A in the chat of a cold? From the five fiduciary responsibilities, what's A? Or just, yeah. Not accounting. Nikki accountability. There you go. What's C? What's O? L? And D? Which one did we get wrong? Ah, man, I guess it's been a while since I've taken the exam, but I'm pretty sure that the C is for confidentiality, not care. You got, if it's in the text or in your lectures differently, but because confidentiality is the only fiduciary duty that. Goes beyond the terms of the contract, right? But for a subpoena from a court, you always have to uphold. goes beyond the terms of the contract, right? But for a subpoena from a court, you always have to uphold confidentiality to your clients and only to your clients, not to everybody else. Everybody gets treated honestly and fairly. But it should be accountability, confidentiality, obedience, loyalty, and disclosure. But if you guys like, just double check your notes, double check your texts, double check your lectures around care, but confidentiality should be a fiduciary one. Um, why don't we pick a section? We'll do some vocabulary. We got about 10 minutes left. Um, so let's hit some vocabulary. What section would you guys like to do some terms on? Practice of real estate. We'll hit some practice to real estate definitions. Let's do, fill in the blank. It'll be a little bit tougher. It's going to take some creativity and effort here. All right. Wow, that is going to be a lot. Uh, the Equal Credit Opportunity Act is a federal law passed in 1974 that ensures that all consumers are given equal chance to obtain and maintain credit. The ECOA is implemented through regulation B and enforced by the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. Not exactly sure what the question is. Let's see a hint. Oh, it's just the Equal Credit Opportunity Act. Sorry. Okay. A protected group under the Federal Fair Housing Act making it illegal to discriminate against persons for being a parent or guardian under the, uh, under 18, of a child under 18 years of age is known as what? What is the status that is? Yes, that's right. It's familial status. Correct. The Act contained in Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 that created protected classes of people and prohibited discrimination when selling or renting residential property based on race, color, religion, sex, national orientation, familial status, or handicap status was? You guys got it. It was the better, if I could spell, federal fair housing? Type in too fast, I think. Federal Fair Housing Act. Question number four, the illegal practice of inducing owners to sell their homes often at a deflated price by suggesting that the ethnic and racial composition of a neighborhood is changing with the implication of property values will decline as a result. Also called panic selling, what is this referred to as? Yes, and every listing statement, every listing agreement has to include the disclosure that um, this is illegal. This is really hard to type in these cells. Blockbusting is illegal. Question number five. Whoops. Goodness. All right. Sorry, guys. I don't know how I got back to the dashboard. Um, well, we're going to do flashcards now. Uh, now let's go to fill in the blank. All right. The total cost of financing a uh, loan in percentage terms as a relationship of the total financing charge to the total amount financed, also called APR is annual percentage? Right. Question number two, a protected group under the Federal Fair Housing Act, we already hit this one. We know it. It is familial status. Okay, treating people unequally based on religion, race, sex, national orientation, or some other characteristic of a protest to protect a class is in violation of civil rights laws known as what? Hopefully nobody experiences it and certainly doesn't commit it. That is discrimination. This is really tough to type these in. A person with a fair housing organization who pretends to be interested in buying or renting a property from someone suspected unlawful discrimination, uh, this person is also known as a checker. Tester is correct. Question number five, federal guidelines under the Truth in Lending Act that require full disclosure of all credit terms for all consumer loans is what? Yes, regulation, the regulation Z. That means if you disclose any terms of the loan, you got to disclose all terms. So you could say low, low rates available. Uh, and that's fine, but if you say 2.99% APR, you need to, what's the term? What's the, is there, is it adjustable? Question number six. Uh, federal law prohibiting uh, public and private racial discrimination of property transaction in the U.S. is known as? The Civil Rights Act of 1866, says Nicole. And that's correct. Great job. Uh, we already hit this one, which was the Equal Credit Opportunity Act. An act contained in, uh, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. Do we already have this one as well? Created protected classes for, yep, Federal Fair Housing Act. Yes, thank you. Question number nine, channeling prospective buyers or tenants in a particular neighborhood based on their race, religion, national origin, or ancestry is known as what? It's also illegal. Don't do it. Steering. Part of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, national orientation, or familial status, also referred to as the Federal Fair Housing Act. This is just a different question said, you know, the last question said differently. Title VIII. Uh, question number 11, the Department of Housing and Urban Development Government Agency deals with those issues. You will learn about HUD and HUD statements. The illegal practice of inducing, we already had this one, is illegal and is stated as such on all listing agreements. Blockbusting is illegal. Federal Housing Administration is a federal agency that in 1943 to increase homeownership provided an insurance program to safeguard the lender against risks of non-payment. FHA is currently in a part of housing and urban development. Okay, I guess we're just supposed to type the Federal Housing Administration. All right. Last question tonight. When the lender refuses to make loans secured by a property in a certain neighborhood because of racial or ethnic composition of the neighborhood? Hey, what Nicole and Nicolette are all over these tonight. Redlining. Can't redline. Don't do it. It's illegal. All right, gang. I apologize. I'm going to have to get my stiletto out the door a little bit early tonight, but thank you all for being here. Uh, I know we've got some of you taking your tests soon, so get that knocked out. Fingers crossed for you. Uh, everyone else, if you have not scheduled your exam, if you need help scheduling your exam, if you're waiting for information from me or the state or Gina or anybody else in our company or in the process, please let us know. We want to make sure that we don't lose sight of anything in the crazy holiday time period. We're here to help in any way we can. Look forward to seeing you guys again, potentially next week. I will let everybody know by email sometime in the next, the next seven days as to whether